Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Board Meeting. If we could please first stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first, we've got correspondence. Anybody got anything they want to talk about in there?
None did I see.
Okay.
One of the items, you know, raises the issue of the Underhill Farms project and how that is being handled. And I was wondering if we could bring that on as an agenda item, maybe at some point to respond to all this stuff.
Sure.
But maybe not tonight, but next time.
Yeah, we could do that.
Thank you. And the other one was, I believe.
We got a letter.
Correspondence, which we did review last time and refer it to council.
Yep.
We can just hold off on that one.
Yeah, wait till you should. Is Jim coming, or?
As far as I know.
All right, so we'll have to put that off till he gets here. All right, so maybe we'll discuss that later in the meeting if Jim gets here. Uh, meeting minutes of October third, two thousand and twenty-two. Any issues, corrections?
None here.
Then do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into the regular portion of the meeting. Uh, first on the agenda is the Wendy's at Staples Plaza. This is a public hearing. Location's three-three-nine-nine Crampon Road. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, board members. Jennifer Porter, on behalf of the applicant, and I'm here from CSG Law. We're here tonight in connection with the applicant's site plan, preliminary and final site plan application. Um, this is an application by Wenesco Yorktown LLC, which is a Wendy's franchisee. We've been in front of this board um, on several occasions with respect to work sessions and last month for a public informational hearing. Um, as this board is aware, the applicant is seeking site plan review in connection with proposed site modifications for the property which is located at thirty-three ninety-nine Crampon Road. And that is more specifically located within the BJ Staples Shopping Center. Um, this project, just by way of brief background, includes the full interior demolition and renovation along with exterior site modifications to the existing drive-through queuing lane and adjacent parking area, um, as well as landscaping and lighting modifications. In addition, new signage was proposed in connection with this application as well. Um, in addition to previously appearing in front of this board, the applicant has been in front of Abaca several times in connection with this application to discuss the architecture, landscaping, lighting as well, and, um, the signage proposed for the site and received favorable memorandums, uh, from that board as well. So to address the application, since we are here for a public hearing this evening, um, we will be calling, um, Mr. Woodside from Wendy's, um, who will give you some background on the applicant and coming to this site. And then, um, our civil engineer will give you a brief overview of the site, just for the benefit of the public, um, who may be listening this evening or new to this application.
Thank you.
Okay.
And good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, good to be back. Uh, my name's Kevin Woodside. I'm with Wenesco Restaurants. Uh, we're a franchisee with Wendy's, uh, and I'm here with my business partner, Philip Anastas. And, uh, been with the Wendy's brand, oh, forty-ish years. Uh, and, uh, as far as, we're a, Wenesco, this would be restaurant number twenty-one for us. Uh, we, uh, Wenesco, we began, uh, twenty-ish odd years ago as a franchisee and have slowly built to, uh, to the size that we are now. Uh, and we have about seven hundred and thirty, seven hundred and forty employees and, uh, you know, and, and good, good solid supervision. Uh, we're, uh, Philip and I, we live very local to our markets. We're very ketchup-in-the-veins operators. And, uh, how, we've been looking at, uh, this, this part of Westchester for, you know, quite some time. And, uh, they had a lot of interest in, in serving the community. Uh, we, how we came to this site, we actually had been trying to work out something, uh, on the, uh, the Lowe's Shopping Center, uh, down the road, uh, couldn't quite work out some, some traffic flow, uh, concerns that we had with it. And while working on solving that, we learned that this site would be coming to market, and so we, uh, knocked on the door and had a little chat with Herb Stat Biddle, and, uh, we were able to have a deal. Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's very well situated for us. Uh, the, uh, once we're in and be- beginning construction, it's a project that we think we can turn in about thirteen, fourteen weeks. So it's a very limited downtime. And, uh, that's, uh, we're, as far as operations, uh, we serve breakfast. And, uh, most of our restaurants are open till about one AM-ish, uh, depending upon what the, uh, what the town needs. The community will pretty much tell us, uh, you know, how long we need to be there. And, um, I don't know what else you might want to hear from us. What questions can I answer about, uh, the company and how we support our people?
Is there any relationship between the new franchise and the one that is currently on Route Six?
Uh, no. No, no, that, that's a different operator.
I have no questions.
Thank you very much.
You guys have been very, uh, helpful with everything we've had so far, so thank you.
Well, looking forward to being here. Thanks. Thank you.
Uh, good evening again, Chairman, Members of the Board, Daniel Chanel. I am the site civil engineer, uh, who worked on this application. Uh, so you heard from me several times, but just to essentially reiterate what we're doing here. Building staying where it is, uh, circulation relatively stays the same. Some minor drive-through upgrades. Essentially, we're going from one order point that the Dunkin' had to two order points. Essentially, that allows the Wendy's operation to take two orders at one time, begin prepping two orders at the same time. Still only have one pickup window, um, but it helps process cars through that drive-through a lot more efficiently. Uh, so definitely some, some drive-through improvements there, uh, putting a concrete pad at these two order points, which are shown on the, on the plan that you see in front of you. Uh, but other than that, the, the circulation around the building remains the same. Uh, along the front edge of the site, uh, right in front of that building, there was originally head-in parking spaces. We have since revised that to provide, um, angled parking spaces. Uh, reason being is we really wanted to, uh, enforce that one-way circulation around the buildings as there's no conflict with the, the drive-through. Uh, but one thing we did need to do is, uh, remove the one, uh, small landscape island that was, uh, once separating the Dunkin' Donuts order point from those, uh, parking spaces, uh, that were head-in. Um, because if they stayed where there was, it would be, uh, very difficult for, for vehicles to back out of there without hitting, um, that landscape island. So we removed that. And then when we angled those parking spaces, we also resulted in a net loss of, uh, about seven parking spaces, uh, which does result in a, uh, a need, um, uh, doesn't meet that parking requirement. But again, that was justified just because of the fact that the majority of the traffic that Wendy sees on the day-to-day operation is through the drive-through. About sixty percent of their business is through the drive-through, so, uh, and there is sufficient parking, uh, just from site observation around this corner of the site. So, um, the loss of those parking spaces is not anticipated to be an issue. Uh, since we did lose that landscape island, and then when we ultimately angled those spaces, we were able to provide two additional landscape islands at other end or, or expand the existing landscape islands that are on either end of the, that parking field there, uh, to ultimately result in a net reduction in impervious surface coverage. Small amount, but still a reduction. Outside of that, we are providing a new freezer cooler to the rear of the building, which is that gray shaded area just to the north of the building. Footprint there, uh, replacing the, the structure that was there. Um, and this is a, a, a pre-manufactured device which Wendy's uses for their operations to, uh, refrigerate their, uh, their supplies for the building. We are proposing some, uh, minor, uh, lighting improvements. No site lighting, uh, improvements, but, uh, providing some new lighting around the outside of the building, which is shown in our landscape and lighting plan. Essentially, this is just to provide some architectural flavor to the facade of the building, um, as well as kind of illuminate those pedestrian areas, but no other changes to the site lighting that currently exists. So we did, since we were last time we were here, we did model that lighting essentially just to show that there would be no spill over the property lines. It wouldn't be any real intense lighting, really, again, just to provide some safety around those steps and the sidewalk around the, the building and, and provide some architectural style to the building. Um, we are providing some, some landscaping along the frontage and in the various landscape islands that are immediately adjacent to these, uh, Wendy's building. Uh, since we were last here, uh, we did receive some comments back from the town asking us to actually, um, make the landscaping a little less intense, so to help it blend into the area of the site a little bit more. So we, we did do that. We did reduce the style of the landscaping, make it a little bit more consistent throughout the area. So we were happy to make that revision. As far as the, uh, building itself, uh, again, a- as you heard, we're doing a, a full interior demo and, uh, rebuild on the interior of the building. And the exterior as well will be completely refreshed. It's the same building, uh, but we are providing some of the signature Wendy's elements, the blade elements that you see on the front and side elevations, uh, new materials around the facade that you've heard about in the past, and, uh, a few new signs. But again, it's a reduction in sign area when compared to the existing Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, that, that's a brief overview, uh, made a couple of those changes since we were last here. But if you have any specific questions, more than happy to answer them for you.
We did get letters, um, and I'm sure you've seen them at this, at this point, from the city and Westchester County.
Yes.
Which we'll have to talk about in work session.
Well, have those concerns been addressed at this point? In those two, there's two memos that, that do raise some issues. DEP from the city and Westchester County, which the chairman referenced.
Yes, yeah, the, the DEC essentially requested a, uh, stormwater, uh, calculation and plan, uh, which we have completed this week and we submitted yesterday, actually. Essentially, just a, a small report outlining that there's no changes in the drainage patterns. And, uh, we're actually, uh, I mean, it's a, it's a very small amount, but with that reduction in pervious surface coverage and the drainage patterns remaining the same, we actually have a very minor reduction in the amount of stormwater that leaves the site. So not anticipated to have any issues there, um, and same with the county, more than happy to kind of address their issues and, uh, and make sure that we, we meet, uh, compliance. We had no issues on either report.
When you appeared before us the last time, we were questioning where the garbage dumpster was going to be placed.
I knew I forgot to mention something, but what we did, uh, do is we essentially expanded the viewport on our site plan. So if I zoom out here, you'll see where this dumpster was once cut off from our site plan, um, it is now shown. So it's an existing dumpster that was used for the Dunkin' Donuts, and it'll be continued to use for the Wendy's tenant, uh, or, or Wendy's as the tenant, and it'll be their dedicated, uh, trash enclosure. It's essentially a ten-by-twenty, uh, masonry trash enclosure that exists. One of the dumpsters inside there will be for trash, the other of which would be for, uh, recycling.
Will that be finished and any of the finishes that are represented on the building?
Uh, I'm not sure. That dumpster at all? Are we making any changes to it?
Probably enclosed.
Yeah, I, I don't think it was in bad shape, uh, from what I understand, so there was no improvement proposed to it.
That was the source of some complaints in the past with the current tenant, right?
Yeah.
Well, the, the complaints came in from one of the residents that, uh, that there was trash blowing, I guess, the, there's houses right adjacent to you. So I guess the trash was getting on the other side of that road or the, what had been the, uh, the drive-through that wasn't being handled correctly.
Yeah, exactly. And the applicant, uh, did mention they, they have a, essentially a, a, a process that they go through every morning. Uh, one of their employees will go out to the, the parking lot, they'll walk around the parking lot, pick up any trash that they see. Obviously, they're not the only tenants on this site, um, but anything that's in their general vicinity, they make sure to clean up. Really, because curb appeal is a big, um, item for, uh, this operator, and they want to make sure their store looks clean and inviting to their customers, um, and they'll absolutely uphold that, uh, for this location.
Any, um, concern with putting that on the site plan as a regular maintenance schedule?
That's not a problem. We can do that.
And that, so there, it's a part of your site plan approval? Is that something that you'd consider?
And as we, uh, alluded before, there's this county letter, and they also are talking about one of Aaron's favorite subjects, the pedestrian connectivity. So they're asking for additional sidewalks and for that to be looked at in addition to, uh, there are, of course, they always do ask for green building technology and bicycle parking. So that's something you're gonna have to look at closely.
Yeah, we can work with them on that. I'm sure we can find a location for bike parking, but as far as pedestrian connectivity, it's essentially, it's an existing site, so it would be difficult to provide, you know, any additional sidewalks throughout the site and, and kind of retrofit an entire site just for some minor improvements to, uh, to a Wendy's. But, um, again, more than happy to kind of work that through with them and make sure that we come to a resolution to address.
Anything else from the board?
Nothing here.
No.
Anybody from the public? Nope. John, Robin?
Nothing here.
Dan's not here. All right, well, if there's no other comments or concerns, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we'll see you in the work session. Thank you very much. It was a big turnout. I think the Wendy's team's gonna empty the room. We lost Joe. There he is. All right, next, we have, uh, the Colangelo Major subdivision. This is a request for second ninety-day time extension. Location is one-eight-zero-five Jacob Road.
How are you, buddy?
How are you?
Okay.
Hey.
Hello, Jim.
Um, I think you received a letter from Geraldine Tortorello, the attorney for the project. We're waiting for clearance or approval on all the legal instruments. And once that's done, we are ready to move forward with getting signature on the plat- and filing the plaque.
We're discussing this, been bouncing around for quite some time.
Two thousand fifteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, wow.
Any comments from the board, concerns?
None.
Oh, nothing's changed?
No. John, Robin? Jim?
No, nothing for me.
All right, then, if there's no concerns or questions, do I have a motion to approve the request for the second ninety-day time extension for the Colangelo Major subdivision?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Got it. Next on the agenda is, uh, the Roberta Front Street. This is a request for reapproval. Again, location is various dresses, Front Street, site design. Hi, Joe.
Nothing has changed on that application. I, I think, um, the owner is waiting for the right market for him to do what he wants to do. You know, he's asking to keep the project alive and, and get, uh, a reapproval of that site plan.
Sorry, been approved.
No, we spent a lot of time on this one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor?
Nothing for me.
All right, there's no concerns, issues? Do I have a motion approving the resolution, reapproving a stormwater pollution prevention plan, tree permit, refuse pickup times, lighting plan, and landscape plan for George Roberta Front Street?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
And, thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Counsel, while you, we, we went through correspondence, we just wanted to touch base on the, if we can go back to correspondence. About the, um, concern that was raised by Michael Grace Esquire in reference to the responsibility of the planning board and the town with the solar. So do you want to speak to that?
Sure.
Thank you.
The, uh, letter... Oh, sorry. The letter attempts to make an argument that the approval was illegal because the use was never permitted use in the first place. The building inspector implicitly reviewed that when he referred the plans to you for approval. And so, uh, the planning board does not have the authority to interpret the zoning ordinance. That power rests solely with the, um, zoning board of appeals and with the building inspector. So, um, at this point, I think you have to act as if the building inspector's determination was correct and, um, approve the plan.
Okay.
So just, so I understand what you're suggesting is the only time to make that type of a challenge would have been within a certain period of time from when the building inspector made the referral.
Well, there are a couple of cases on that that go in either direction. One ca- one line of cases says that the building inspector didn't really make a ruling. He just sent it on, and there's nothing for someone to appeal from. And there's another line of cases that said it's up to the property owner to, uh, or the objector to, um, to find out the status of the application and act timely. Under the town law, you have sixty days from the day the building inspector renders a decision to appeal it to the zoning board of appeals.
So we can proceed with the final certification based upon the resolution we adopted?
Correct.
Is that your advice?
That is my legal opinion, yes.
Okay. So...
All right, so now that's on the record, and we can go forward, you know, with the signatures as we were going to do last time.
Okay.
Is there any need to respond to this letter, formally, or we just did it on the record and that would be sufficient?
I would not respond to it. I would treat it as any other correspondence that you get, which typically does not eng- uh, engender any response.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna close the regular portion of the meeting and move into the work session. Uh, first on the work session, we have the Dorchester Glen subdivision. Uh, this is a discussion on the subdivision. Location's one-six-four-three Maxwell Drive. Joe and John.
How you doing?
How are you?
Uh, so I, as you know, at the last meeting, uh, you voted to approve the project as presented with the, uh, modifications to the, uh, first and fourth lot as far as house position and, and driveway. And, um, in the resolution, uh, we did not have the resolution in hand. I, I should have asked for that, to look at it. But in there, it had that the recreation compensation was going to be the ten thousand dollar per lot fee. And all along, we had been presenting about donating to the town and making a, a potential trail connect- collection, connection, sorry, from Hanover East down to the north end of the property, where you have the potential at some point to extend a trail and continue a connection, uh, more into the Heights area. Anyway, so with that said, we're back to discuss that. Uh, the, so what I have here before you is, this is the overall site, and I'm gonna just zoom in a little bit tighter so it's a little easier to see. I don't know if we're gonna get it really. So, uh, this line here and this parcel here to the east is the parcel that, that, that we're talking about, which is just over eleven acres. Um, there's a, a nice stone wall that delineates that from the rest of the property, and that's why that was chosen. We've shown along that, the, uh, location for a potential trail. So this is the Hanover East property, the corner of the, uh, open space there. And, um, you have the potential trail that can follow that along the stone wall and out. Let's get this... Continue this stone wall all the way to this end of the property here. And, um, this is the Grange Fair, and, um, this is another, is another parcel which is, uh, has a potential for someone to come in for a subdivision, so that would be the, the potential source of, of extending the, the, uh, trail, if it's so desired, out to, um, McKeel Street. So, um, we're here to discuss that, and, um, John, you want to say anything?
It goes out to Mosman.
I'm sorry, Mosman.
To the north.
Yeah.
I just made a little map from... The yellow is, is our property. This is Hanover Hilltop, this is Hanover East, this is our property, and this is my neighbor Paul's property, this is the Grange Fair. But the whole idea of us donating that land in lieu of the fee for a potential trail is to have connectivity realistically for anything. Hikers, bikers, walkers, whatever, which would really go all the way down to the Hanover Hilltop. And then, these two pieces come out to Mosman. The town has a little linear park on Maxwell Court, and then a cut through to the Junior Lake neighborhood. They could get to the pool, they could get to the center of town. And, you know, we've seen these things before, and I see Featherbed was... I'm kidding, Jim, if I don't get to the microphone. Featherbed was on the agenda, um, but this is a work session, so I can... But, uh, Featherbed was on the agenda tonight, and we did the same thing there with the Hunterbrook Linear Park. I took a look at the map on the other side of town. This is the Hunterbrook Linear Park, and one of the comments that came up was it dead-ended into private property, which I didn't realize at the time. We were not connecting to the Grange Fair as well as Paul's property. So we put a little strip that goes into the Grange Fair. If that's the next piece that gets developed, and then it connects through here, if the trail goes down through this neighborhood. But the Hunterbrook Park was two separate subdivisions, Foxtail Lane and then Beak McCourt. And now Featherbed has come in, and now we are getting a trail up through here, up to Jacob Road. So these things happen, you know, piece by piece. We've looked at many of them during my tenure. That was the whole reason we pursued this in the first place and, and went with the five-block plan as opposed to the eleven or thirteen, whatever Joe came up with first. So I would still like... I'd still like to pursue that. Um, you know, that's what Elaine and I had in mind, and, you know, in lieu of the forty thousand dollar recreation fee, we would be willing to donate almost half the land, you know, to the town. Uh, subsequent to the meeting, I didn't get a copy of the resolution till after the meeting started, as you know. I went home and printed it and read it and came right back here, but you had already closed the meeting, uh, two weeks ago. Because I was hoping to clarify it that night. But, um, you know, I know at this point, uh, the recreation commissioner, uh, head of parks and recreation wants the money. And that has happened in the past. They've wanted the money in the past. The planning board makes whatever decision they think is the most reasonable. Uh, I know that they've made a decision to take the land instead of the money in the past. And the money, frankly, is here today and gone tomorrow, and how it gets spent, I don't know, but the land is forever. So, you know, it's, in the context of that and what was done over with Featherbed, that's how we proceeded with our project. And that's what I would like you to reconsider and hopefully amend the resolution.
I, I tend to agree with John and the argument on this, and I just want to give a personal, uh, story that I was involved in many years ago. The issue here, I think, is whether you're looking at something from the immediate point of view or if you're looking long-term and, and hoping to create other opportunities. And the, um, legacy fields over off Strang Boulevard, you know, where it dead-ended off of one-thirty-two, was a town purchase that was made without consideration of what we might use it for. But we felt at that time the board authorized the purchase of that property when I was in office without really having a vision of what it might be, just knowing that it provided an opportunity in the future for something. And it turns out that it's a very valuable asset to the town after the way it was finally developed. But the purchase of this open space in and of itself had value at the time. I think, given the fact that this property is surrounded by other open space, that has a value in the future as well, and I personally like the idea of, of balancing the recreational needs of the town in such a way that we're not exclusively going into active recreation, but we're doing some passive recreation. We're preserving open space and accomplishing those objectives in this setting. We're preserving open space and accomplishing those objectives in this setting, you know, provides a lot of opportunity which may or may not be realized immediately, but it, hopefully later on, so I would, I would support a modification of this to take the space. It's not a small amount of space, there's, there's history, some of the things that, that John pointed out in other areas created, you know, very valuable open space to the town, um, the whole section north of two oh two, you know, off Stony Street is, is a prime example of the Sylvan Glen. And everything that connects over there is, is, you know, it's not a ball field, but it's, it's very much used as open space and that as an environmental benefit, too.
Well, thank you for that, and this side of town didn't really have, we, we do have Hilltop, Hanover, which is wonderful, but to be able to connect that, you know, to everything right up, hopefully someday to the Grange Fair and beyond. Bowseys has fifty acres on the other side of Mosman, and, you know, you cross Mosman and now you're on a parcel that a couple of years ago was being discussed to be sold to a developer, actually, but they, they put the kibosh on that at the time. But there's a big piece north of Mosman also, so, you know, if you're thinking, and then that would connect directly to the Junior Lake community, so then you have, you know, the lake, the playground, the pool, everything connected if you come through Bowseys and then through the Grange or this neighbor to my north.
Yep.
Uh, we actually purchased two acres when that neighbor pri- the prior owner, Doris Advocate, didn't want the piece that was just like an appendage that came into our property and offered it, you know, to us, two acres that we made part of our property, the twenty four, we went from twenty-two acres to twenty-four. So now we have a connection to both the Grange and that property. So, if you're open to it, then I would ask that you would amend the resolution to take the land with the proposed trail, uh, in lieu of the recreation fee.
Susan Siegel's here, she's on the Trail Committee, right?
Yeah.
You wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, and Susan actually asked about it early on in the process, if I recall.
Hi, John.
Hi.
Yeah, we, we work with the planning board, um, Trail Town Committee and the Open Space Committee, um, on, on the Featherbed, uh, project. This sounds very interesting, and I would ask you to, um, I'm not that familiar with the area, um, so I would ask you to have the Trail Town Committee and also, um, the advisory committee on open space, ta- take a look at this. And, and to, um, Aaron's point about the town purchasing woodlands, before you knew what you were gonna do with it, today it is a phenomenal connection between Woodlands, Granite Knolls, and Sylvan Glen. And we have trails going from one to the other, and this balance of athletic fields versus open space. So, uh, you know, it sounds like a very interesting project, but I think we have to look at the map, and if you could, you know, send, send Trail Town and ACOs a copy of the maps, and we would get back to you as soon as possible so that John isn't delayed in this project.
I think that would be smart, you're right with that, John?
I was hoping you would amend the resolution tonight, I mean, you, you, you know, it's, it's pretty, let Susan see the-
You got, oh, you gotta come up to the mic.
I, I, I don't know the trails that well in this area, so I have to, I have to defer to others, you know, and, um-
You're in favor of it?
Amendment.
Right with that?
These are the, the pieces next.
I have second thoughts on it.
This is my next.
I will.
I, I need to study this, John, I can't do it right. I, I would say we could get back to you, the planning board-
You don't get access from here.
So I think two weeks is, is fine because this, this has just come up.
But the other place is gonna be on.
And I think it would certainly be to your advantage if, uh, the Open Space Committee, you know, could also support it, you know, on, on the record.
That's if they approve on these two properties.
So thank you, uh, thank you Chairman, for the opportunity to speak at the work session.
Thank you, Susan.
I have an opinion, I think we should amend the resolution because like you said, you throw money into the account, next year it's gone. You can't import land, you can't spend land unless you have it, you can't use it unless you have it.
That's, that was our feeling.
And it's, it, land is an asset to the, to the town anyhow, it's open space, you know?
Yep.
No, no disrespect to any of the committees, this was our intent from the beginning. I didn't get a copy of the resolution before the meeting, and this is what I expected, you know? So.
Go ahead, please.
No, I, I have a question.
Sure.
That it, on the, I guess, the sudden end of the proposed trail, if the two properties, one labeled Brady and the other doesn't have a name on it, if they don't connect to that trail, this trail starts nowhere. Please do.
What's that?
They may in a, in a, in the future.
Yeah, they, it's possible, right here. This is where-
Brady, we're coming now across to the open space, so this is already owned by the town of Yorktown.
So you're coming through here?
Right, so we, we have a leg of that that comes-
Alright, this is not showing it.
Right.
The new, that plan, see this plan there?
That shows it.
Yes.
Alright, I have no issues with this.
John?
If you're going to amend it tonight, we have to do the language tonight.
Right.
So. Cause there's no-
And we're in a work session.
We have to remove-
That's true.
We have to remove the paragraph that says, you know, we're taking the money in lieu, et cetera, et cetera, and then re, rework that according to the discussion that you've had here tonight that reflects that you have considered this parcel to be taken by the town for the open space and recreational use and, and the reasons whereof, as you've elaborated on, so. So we'd have to write that now for you to vote on, or, or do it for the next meeting.
Probably best that we-
Oh, you're in work session, that's right, that's another, that's another.
Alright, so why don't we dig into the details? Work that out.
rewrite the resolution.
Yeah, and in the meantime, if you wanna reach out to Walt or-
Well, you know, again, I thank you for your consideration, with, you know, this was our intent, and, you know, it's just unfortunate that we weren't present with the resolution in hand at the last meeting, but whatever you think is, uh, best and help you to make the best decision.
Yeah, let's work the devils into the details, John.
And, and do you want us to attempt to get the opinion of the Open Space Committee?
At this point, I think you would welcome that.
In the two weeks?
Yes, I think we should refer to them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And we'll give them the timeframe.
You know, it was only the timeframe, you know, that would be great.
I can't do a procedural landing house, so we've gotta wait.
Another special meeting. I'll, I'll send it, I'll send it to Rob and-
Thank you, guys. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Amawak Friends Meeting House. This is a C A P A space, locations two, four, six, seven, Quaker Church Road. How are you?
I'm fine.
Good evening. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Elise Graham, and I'm one of the co-founders of the Capa Space. Um, we're a recently formed nonprofit, and, um, we are renting a building on the property that, you know, twenty-four sixty-seven Quaker Church Road, which is the property that the Amawak Friends Meeting House is on, and we're renting an auxiliary building on the property to house, um, an education and cultural space for the town of Yorktown. We're located there because we're dedicated to the mission of photographers, world famous photographer Robert Capa, who's buried at the Amawak Friends Meeting House Cemetery. The Friends have been charged with the maintenance of the Capa graves, kind of in perpetuity. Um, our mission kind of intersects with theirs in terms of bringing to, to the community, um, the opportunity to learn about the power of photography. And I'm here because I wanna make sure we are using that space in accordance with the rules.
What is, what is before us?
Okay, so, um, their first step was to go to the building inspector, and the building inspector called us up and said, you know, what do you think, do they need any site planning? Uh, is this use allowed in this, you know, in, on this property, in this zone, so? We started talking with Elise and her team, and religious institutions are approved under our code, under three hundred fifty-four, as a special permit. Under that same section of code is all manner of charitable, educational, social, cultural uses. So for instance, the Elks Club would have a special permit under three hundred fifty-four, as would a church, as would any other religious uses or any other charitable institutions or educational institutions such as, is here. So there is an old parking plan that was done with the building that they are hoping to rent, which was first built as a daycare, and then which became yet another daycare. So there is parking there, there is the access, uh, essentially a developed site to whatever level it was developed to at the time. Uh, so, we wanted to bring it to you, so the building inspector at some point has the right piece of paper in his hand in order to produce a building permit for the applicant. Uh, the question is whether, you know, to what extent it needs any review or, or approval. You know, my, my sense on it is that all of the infrastructure there is existing will not be changed. They are utilizing the space without any additional, without any additions to the structure, so it's not expanding the use. Uh, and in terms of its use category, it is allowed under the same section of code that the religious institution and the, um, and other types of those uses are allowed, so. It seemed to me that it didn't warrant any additional site planning. Uh, you guys may feel that it, you know, needs to go through some sort of process so that there is, you know, an updated record, or you may not, that's why we brought it to you for your consideration.
The mapping you showed us doesn't really show too much of any, anything on there, it looks like, I mean, property must be quite. See letters here from nineteen eighty-nine, and then building inspector Bill Garrity.
Stuff from Ray Arnold, here too.
Unparkment paper, no doubt.
Yeah, basically has a gravel parking area, you can see it on the last sheet of the pack.
Are there any concerns that we need to think about, I mean, is the amount of numbers of people gonna be increased over what has been there before, or?
Well, it's hard for me to say, uh, cause I don't know how it was used in terms of the amount of cars originally. So it was used as, um, a nursery school for the church itself, but, and then tha- that diminished, but then they, um, rented that space, the same space we're talking about, to kind of a regular nursery school, Bright Beginnings, which is still in the town, just not at that location anymore. So when it was tha- when it was Bright Beginnings, I imagine there were people driving in, dropping off at certain hours, and there was parking for, I guess, staff, but I, I just don't know.
How many people are you anticipating?
Um, boy. On, kind of on a daily basis, very, very few. I think it will be just a kind of a continuous trickle of people coming in, and then we'll have some things going on there, but I would say maybe at the max, because the building is only, I believe, around nine hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not going to be having big things there, um, you know, if we were gonna have, let's say, a talk with a photographer, we would probably try to do it at the high school or somewhere like that, so it would just be smaller gatherings.
If it was a, a, a gallery opening, or you, you were- Could you anticipate a large crowd if you had a?
It's possible, we did, um, ask the Quakers if we could use, use the, the, um, grounds for an event in late summer, it was a free, um, outdoor screening of a film. And we had about forty people there, and there was, as far as I could see, no problem with parking. As, just incidentally, the, the, the Quakers have had a relationship with the Amawak Hill Cemetery to use their parking, that the base of their driveway. For, for instance, they use that on Christmas Eve services, et cetera. And people park there, and then there, there is parking up the gravel drive for a number of cars.
Well, I think we're, what we're looking into or is building occupancy. How many people would this building be able to accommodate?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm just like nine hundred, I can just tell you it's, the square footage is-
Yes.
I think a, a small amount over nine hundred square feet.
That's my only concern is, is, you know, the adequacy of the site to support what you're doing, you know? If that can be shown and we're okay, then-
If you look at the email at the beginning of the package, I don't know if you saw that.
Way back when?
It does say, open Thursday to Monday from neutral six, I don't know if this is updated, but it says about eight, no more than eight to ten people per hour.
That was an estimate, yeah.
Right, eight to ten.
Right.
Average time in the space would be twenty minutes, et cetera, et cetera. Gatherings will not exceed twenty-five people.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah. Yeah, and the building inspector is gonna set that.
I think that's the general.
Yeah, I would say that's about right.
Now would also, the, the building inspector's gonna set occupancy.
Yeah, and the, um, the church, the church is still ho- holding services?
Every other Sunday morning.
Every other Sunday morning, and they can, they can house, I would assume, forty to fifty people in the church, or?
Well, we did that calculation, you know, a long time ago, so I would say, yeah, there are a lot of pews in there.
Right, okay, so, it sounds, it sounds as though the, uh, this use will not exceed what can already be housed in the church, it sounds like, so. But, do, is this, is this facility to promote the interest in photography, or to showcase photographers, or is it a historical, educational facility for?
All of the above. All of the above.
I'm trying to get, what I was trying to get to is that if you had a visiting photographer, let's say-
Yes.
There would be interest in that person due to the fact that that person is living, so you probably have a larger crowd.
Yes.
And if you had a reception like a gallery might have, you might have that offsite if it were large enough to house or to expect enough people.
Um.
As opposed to a, a gallery showing where people just come in and out randomly.
Right.
Would require a different pressure on the, on the site in terms of parking and so forth.
Yes.
Bathrooms and the rest.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's hard to answer some of these questions because-
You're doing all of the above.
Yeah, because I don't know yet, um, uh, even when you have, um, an opening, I mean, I've gone to many, many openings, especially in the area, and people come and go, so, y- you know, you may have, you know, fifty people, but it will be an opening that's from seven to nine, and people stay for twenty minutes.
How many people do you, would you, uh, expect to attend church every other Sunday, approximately, do you know?
Very few. They don't have a large congregation.
John, you got any issues?
I don't have any issues with, with the use particularly.
Okay.
Uh, I know that the site has been operating, you know, operating a daycare is a fairly intense use in the mornings and the, and the evenings, not in the middle of the day. And when they say there's eight to ten people typically at, at maximum, you know, rotating possibly, which is probably very conservative. I, I would say it's not gonna, going to overwhelm the site whatsoever. Uh, any of the discussions of events sounds as though would not exceed anything that you might expect on a, a holiday, Easter or Christmas at the church. So I, I don't know, and we haven't heard any, any complaints or had any, heard any concerns about the operation of the site in those times or from the site at all, so.
Okay.
Well, you're not gonna get complaints from the neighbors, that's-
That?
It's very quiet.
Very quiet.
Very quiet.
And also, Elise, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, your, your leasing the site will provide some dollars for the, for the Cemetery Association to help maintain what they need to maintain, right?
Oh, yes, they're-
Part of their, uh, their hope there.
They're very, um, much looking forward to our collaboration, and, um, vice versa. They're very much looking forward to our collaboration, and vice versa. They've been great. We have... One of the members of the church is on our Board of Directors, so we have a very close relationship, physically and in every other way.
Do you have any issues?
I don't have any issues.
Anything from the board?
No.
All right, so what do we got to do, John?
I can do a...
I'll talk to you before you leave.
I could do a, you know, a memo to the building inspector, say that you looked at it, and you, you know, that the site as constructed will handle this use, and that the use is already, you know, allowed use for under the section of code that this is already operating.
That's the balls in his court.
We give it our blessing.
Yes.
Thank you.
In the works.
Thank you so much.
I would just, just off the record for this, I went to school with the son of Ezra Stoller, who was a noted architectural photographer.
Oh, wow.
He's still alive, and I'm still somewhat in touch with him every couple of years, and he lives in Columbia County.
Oh, okay.
So, I'd be interested in contacting him, because his father's work was renowned.
I love a good lead.
So, I can make that happen for you possibly, if he's still at the other end of the phone I had for him.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right, best of luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, thank you.
Take care. All right, next, we have, and last on the agenda, we have a town board referral. This is a discussion of amended special use permit, locations 2035 Sommel River Road, Sanitation Glow.
I guess, Susan, you're going to present this?
I'm just...
Only one here.
While I was getting away.
I don't know.
They were in front of us a while ago.
If I didn't come, you'd have no audience.
No.
That's right.
John, there was a bigger plan for this, wasn't there? Michael Piccirillo?
Yes, there is a bigger plan for this, and peculiar to this, or particular to this application right here in front of you is that the town board wanted a little bit of more architectural consideration on the canopy. So, you know, sometimes they have a little bit of a, like almost a mansard roof. It doesn't do much, but it does something rather than that, and I don't see that here.
There's not, yeah, there's not so much of anything.
It just looks like your standard mold. I don't know what's going on with this other project.
If they're still thinking about that, that could change everything, right?
Yeah, that would change.
This is a sign application.
This is just a sign application, so it may be that that project is not moving forward, and that this is just kind of some of the rebranding that we've been seeing.
Is it all compliant?
I believe it is.
Nothing jumps out at me, I don't have any...
I don't see anything either.
I don't see anything here.
Outside of sign, I mean, if they're not doing that bigger project...
No planning issues then?
I don't think so, anybody?
I don't see anything.
I don't see anything.
No.
All right.
Pretty good.
Okay, on to the next item. All right, do we have motion to close the meeting?
Motion, second.
No, we're going to put that item on an agenda.
We're going to make it an agenda item for the next meeting, so people know we're going to talk about it.
Because I'm sure people will show up for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. 7:54.